I think we're ready to begin. I want to welcome everyone tonight to the Citizens of the World Kansas City Public Hearing and Board Interview with the Missouri Charter Public School Commission. Thank you for joining us this evening as we hear from the school leadership and public about the renewal of the Citizens of the World Charter Contract. My name is Bailey Geist and I am with the Missouri Charter Public School Association and I will be serving as your moderator. We will begin the hearing with welcoming remarks followed by the brief presentation by the Citizen of the Worlds team, then turn to hear in comment from the public. If you did not sign up to speak tonight but would like to provide comment, please feel free to place them in the chat or email to info@mcpsc.mo.gov. That's info@mcpsc.mo.gov. And at 8:55, we will finish taking public comment, take a short break, and then return with the board interview. And just note that anyone who is giving public comment, keep it under two minutes just so we can get through as quickly as possible and hear from as many people as possible. So I would now like to turn it over to the Honorable Delbert Scott, Chairman of the Missouri Charter Public School Commission.
Thank you Bailey and welcome to everyone that's on the call tonight. We are excited to hear the comments and interview the board tonight for the five-year renewal of our first school to start and the sponsor, Citizens of the World Kansas City. Introducing the Citizens of the World program tonight is going to be John Heil, who's the Executive Director. And I'm not sure if Luke is the Board Chair is going to be participating in that, but one of you gentlemen, if you would take off and tell us what you've got this evening.
Great, thank you Delbert and thank you Bailey and to the Missouri Charter Public School Commission and MPCSA for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Luke Norris. I am the Chair of the Board and also was the founding Board Chair. And it's my great honor tonight to share a little bit about where we've been since we last had the opportunity to meet with you all and also to introduce our new highly-qualified and esteemed Executive Director, John Heil, to share a little bit about where we're going. So for those of you that can see my screen, our motto is citizens of the world, growing every day. And in fact, that's what we've been doing over the past six years. And I'd love to share a little bit about who we are and where we've been. Our mission at CWC is focused on educating young adults in a diverse environment focused on developing, understanding, and building connections within their diverse community. And we really ground not only our school, but our entire community in our core values. And tonight, I believe, as you hear from members of our public, you'll hear how they reflect to and resonate with these core values of excellence, change, community, diversity, and authenticity. So we've come a long way since we first connected with you all back in 2014. As you'll remember, this is a school that was started with and for and by a group of committed parents. We partnered with the Midtown Community Schools Initiative in 2013 to start identifying solutions for big public school closures, district public school closures in our area. We then completed a nationwide RFP, entered into negotiations and discussions with the Citizens of the World Charter Schools, and ultimately submitted our application in partnership with the network in 2015, which was then approved. We launched our schools with a kindergarten and first grade loop, serving 125 students. We've continued growing every year. I think it's important to note that we actually opened in Kansas City as the largest charter school to ever open and were, for the past several years, the fastest-growing charter school in Kansas City. We've also accelerated the start of a middle school, which has become a promising start to our kind of advanced grades education. We've had an incredible school culture built there. We had the opportunity to onboard a middle school principal a year early, who has just built an incredible team, and now really paved the way for a full K8 experience for our students. And as we grow forward this year, we're also bringing on a new national network partner. Citizens of the World Charter Schools has partnered with a group in Cincinnati and will be launching a new school there and actually just announced that they've hired a founding Executive Director. So not only are we growing here regionally, but we're excited and proud of the growth of the Citizens of the World Schools nationally. We just completed some work around a strategic plan and wanted to just highlight some of the strengths that I think we're going to keep building on as we move forward into our next five years. The mission and core value, I think, are things that are resonating, are speaking volumes, and are driving not only the student culture, but the community culture that we want. We've heard quotes just like these overwhelmingly. You know, "I'm delighted to have founded a school with core values that I agree with." "Citizen celebrates them loudly and in a way that is authentic and meaningful." "I'm overwhelmed and grateful for the extent to which the Kansas City community embraces the school's diverse-by-design model." That alone has been a draw for such a huge number of families. We've also seen incredible family engagement. Families at Citizens simply have become our number-one advocates and who've really helped us build strong trust in the school and our community. We're seeing that 90% of parents surveyed believe that Citizens' mission, believe in Citizens' mission, and believe that we're realizing it. We've also had data come back that suggests 80% believe Citizens is headed in the right direction and that we're meeting and exceeding their expectations. We also have demonstrated significant agility. We've consistently had to adapt, whether it's this year to the global pandemic, the realities of under-enrollment in a fragmented public education system, or the need to quickly find locations to accelerate the start of our, you know, middle school. The executive leadership team and the board has demonstrated not only a strong commitment to agility, but also financial management. So while we'd love to tell you that everything is great, we certainly recognize that as a growing school in startup mode for the last five years, we've also seen some areas that we need to improve. And we're proud that these surface not only in our strategic plan, but are also priorities that our board and executive team are committed to. And so quickly to highlight a few of those that I know we'll share a little bit more about is the opportunity to continue kind of codifying the program vision and design. So we need to continue to work more clearly, articulate the school-wide academic vision, and really being able to talk about what that means in terms of what an eighth grader is going to leave Citizens looking like, sounding like, and being able to do in the world. Obviously, we're going to have to continue doubling down on academic outcomes. Data in the strategic plan and also in the charter renewal emphasize that students are not yet being supported to achieve the outcomes that we know that they can achieve. We're seeing that in many ways through performance gaps. Our opportunity gap is real, and it's an area that not only needs to be a focus, but will be a focus of the school in how we build professional development among our staffs, but also how the board governs around areas of investment. As a diverse school, obviously, it's incredibly important to us, not only as a board and an executive leadership team and a group of teachers, but as a community that an anti-racist school culture surfaced as a strategic priority for the organization. And the opportunity to really build that school culture has been kind of the bedrock of what we've been doing the last five years, but is going to be even more so an area of focus for the next five years. And then obviously, as we've, you know, grown and grown fast, you know, we talked about the agility. Sometimes that agility has meant that we've had a kind of skit by on some of the finances. But as we start to grow, stabilize enrollment, and become fully enrolled with about 700 kids in a full K8, we now have the opportunity to become less reliant on philanthropic support and really start to close the sustainability gap that we've had by just relying on public dollars. So all of those are tremendous things. Obviously, it's my great honor to be here as the Board Chair, but the board is only here because of amazing parents, a talented group of staff and teachers who have helped build what we're here to talk about today. And as we go forward, one of the highlights, I think, not only of the strategic plan, but certainly the past year, has been the fact that the board here in KC was able to help bring on a new Executive Director. John Heil joins us with 16 years of experience, having worked in nonprofit leadership, having worked at a local philanthropic organization that made grants to students as they entered college, but also worked in the urban core, helping do mentorship and creating connections between adults and young students at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. John is a fierce advocate of public education. He is someone that understands uniquely what we do here in Midtown, having served as the Board Chair for Kansas City Public Schools, but is now in the seat that's the right place for him to be and certainly the right place for us. And so with that said, I'd like to introduce our new Executive Director, Mr. John Heil. John?
Thank you, Luke. I want to start my comments this evening, which I will keep fairly brief, with an expression of gratitude. I'm grateful to the Commission for your support over the past five years. I'm grateful to our parents, to our students, who have committed so much to us. I am grateful to our teachers and our faculty, who come to work every day convinced that they can be better because our kids and their futures demand it. I'm also grateful to our partners at Citizens of the World Charter Schools. Three members of the senior leadership team are here this evening to support this important next step. So I start my comments with gratitude to everyone because Citizens of the World in its fundamental DNA is a community-based success story. Today, I sit here and I will tell you that I, on behalf of our leadership, on behalf of our staff, am more committed today to the vision of the school more than we ever have been before. But I think we also bring humility to this conversation because we know, based on our experience over the past four years, how hard and difficult the work ahead of us is. We aspire to be an exceptional school for children in our community. And we know that in order to do that, we are going to have to continue to improve our efforts and the product that we put into our classrooms on a daily basis. I wanted to share with you a little bit, Luke, thank you. So as we went through the strategic plan, as Luke referenced earlier, we assessed our school both for what we did well during our first five years, but also where we identified gaps. We were very grateful to work with our partners at Bellwether Education Partners. We're grateful for the support of School Smart KC for to fund this work, but we are most grateful for the results that it shared with our community. During that process, we uncovered five areas that will require intentional and urgent work over the next five years. First, we uncovered the need to more clearly define and more consistently practice the program vision in our school. We felt that it was essential that we clearly articulate the school-wide academic vision to our families and to our stakeholders. While we have succeeded in this in many ways during our first five years, it is still not yet consistent enough for us to be satisfied with our performance in this area. Secondly, as Luke referenced, we have significant academic work to do. During our first assessment with the state of Missouri, our results were encouraging, but also showed us that we have a significant gap between the educational outcomes of different groups of students at our school. Additionally, we have not yet exceeded the state average in either math or ELA. All of those items are part of our goals for this next charter renewal. The next area of focus that we have been working through is improving the school culture at CWCKC. We know that students require significant support in our school, and we know that our school, in order for us to be the kind of school we know that CWC can, we must aggressively and urgently address inequities that exist in our community. Over the past six months, I've been so proud of our team as we have worked to become a school that is on the pathway to having zero exclusionary discipline issues within our school community. We have put in strong policies that I believe updates and improve what we offer students. We've also invested heavily in the support that we're able to offer both students and families at CWCKC. Finally, I want to address the last item on this list, and that is our financial position. It is a very challenging time to be a school, but we know that this must be an area of focus as we move through the next five years. We must build a stronger financial model. We must make conservative decisions with our financial investments, but we also must make strategic decisions to ensure that the funding we do have aligns closely with the strategic outcomes we seek to achieve. So as you move into our renewal, you will see that these four areas of focus, improved academic outcomes, improved school community and school culture, improved financial sustainability, and a commitment to improve the governance of our school and to double down on the community partnerships and to work both with our partners with CWCS, but also our partners locally in Kansas City to ensure that CWC remains a very central part of our community. Again, I am so grateful to have this opportunity to be able to work with an exceptional Board of Directors, to work with an exceptional partner with CWCS, to work with the Commission, to work with our peer schools in Kansas City. I truly believe that in Kansas City, we are on the precipice of sweeping changes that will see even better academic outcomes for all students in our community. And I'm so proud that CWCKC is a part of that tremendous improvement. Thank you. I look forward to answering any questions you may have, and I look forward to hearing our comments from the community as we begin public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Delbert, that concludes the organization's comments, and we yield the floor to the public.
Thank you so much.
You go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much to both of you gentlemen and for the report, and it's an encouraging report. We look forward to drilling down a bit as the evening and tomorrow goes on, and we look forward to the public comment. So Bailey, if you could open up the public comment, we're ready to hear.
Perfect. And I'm just going to real quick make sure that we are live on Facebook because we were having some difficulties, but we will start first a public comment for Raquisha Robertson. And I'm taking you off mute now, so whenever you're ready.
There we go. Hello, everyone. I'm Raquisha Robertson again. I am a CWC parent, so this is our second year in the school, the school and first year as a staff member. I'm a KTA. So I just want to start off by saying CWC is like vital for this city, is vital. I searched high and low when I was looking for a school that fit both of my children's needs, and both of my children are complete opposite of each other. This school was such a blessing. I had never even heard of it. I looked it up online and, you know, the first point of contact, the first person I talked to was Ms. Grif, Ms. Alicia Grif. And, I mean, from there, like, we feel like family, we're welcomed in. And, you know, I was thoroughly impressed by just the willingness of all the teachers and staff members to, first of all, welcome us, but not only that, meet our students where they were and not like skipping steps or pressuring them to like raise up to like a certain standard. Like, they took each step to bring them where they needed to be instead of going, you know, skipping things to... It just made the flow was just amazing, and it made us feel comfortable and confident in their abilities, staff abilities, and our kids' abilities. So that's as a parent. Once I became a KTA and we did institute, I was really impressed with everything that we went over, like, got to cover before students came back. I mean, just like with the diversity and just the things that are important that this school does over, and I've worked at other schools, over what other schools do. I think that they do their best to cover every area. You know, the social-emotional aspect is so important because, okay, yeah, we can, you know, teach your mind, but your heart, your soul, like, that's something completely different and teach you how to, like, control your emotions. And those things are really important. I don't want to take too much time. But also, I just want to say this, the team meetings, staff meetings, things of that nature, the flow of those and how everyone works so well together, and we see where everyone's strengths lie, and we allow everyone to operate in their strengths and, you know, offer support, like, in the areas that they may not be as strong in. Like, CWC has been amazing. Like, I am so blessed to be a part of it. Okay, that's all.
Thank you so much. Next up, we will have Lauren Donovan.
Hi, I'm Lauren Donovan. I am new to Citizens this year, but I have taught for six years in Kansas City, Missouri, previously at a different charter and at a public school. One of the reasons I came to Citizens was because of the mission statement aligned to the core values. They personally match my own teaching philosophies that I've learned with my educational studies. And truly, since I've been at Citizens, not only have I been welcomed by the middle school team, but also the elementary team and leadership, and I've gotten to know our families, which are such a great part of my experience. We've been virtual now. I had the opportunity to do summer school, which was so virtual, and that was the first time where I made a lot of meaningful connections with kiddos, just to see their, like, eyes light up and the work they turned in that was really relevant and really engaging showed to me right away that this was the right place for me to teach. Just to speak to what Ms. Robertson said as well, I get to teach her son Zay, which is super exciting. I also agree that the professional development that Citizens has put in place is definitely engaging and aligns to the goals that they've created. And so I'm just very happy to be here. I believe in this work. I think it's truly important that we are offering our students a top-grade education in our city. Thank you.
Next up, we will have Amber Parks. Going to unmute you now.
Thank you so much for allowing me this time to speak. I wrote mine down so that I don't forget anything. But in January of 2019, I found myself searching for a change for my son. He'd been a longtime student in a local school district here in the Kansas City area, but after weighing some of the changes that were caused by budget cuts and other various situations, I knew that he wasn't being serviced to his capacity or in a way that would cause him to grow academically, socially, or emotionally. So at the time, I was working at a charter school myself, and I knew that wouldn't be a good fit for him either, just for lots of various reasons. So I reached out to a few of my colleagues, and there was one who recommended Citizens. I'd never heard Citizens of the World before, but he said it was a new and upcoming charter and that he'd heard a few good things about them, and he also recommended that I search and take a look at it myself. So that night, I went, did my research on the site, and the very next day, I found myself applying. At this point, we were just really desperate for change. So we went in, had our interview, we were accepted immediately, and my son felt welcomed immediately. He never felt like the new kid. The teachers and the staff were very caring, they were very open, and they cared about him as an individual. Supports were automatically put in place for him, for his learning needs, and I never felt left out of any decision that was made on his behalf and his academic success. I appreciate how CWC really celebrates diversity and community, and it teaches the whole child. What's most impressive for me about CWC is the fact that they meet the students and the families where they are, and then they provide supports and resources based on those needs. They seem to understand that all of the stakeholders are important, and they value each of them, and it's reflected in all facets. I was also impressed that Citizens of the World, I was so impressed with them, that in August of this year, I joined the team as a fourth-grade staff member. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Catherine Maggio.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. I as well, we had moved back into this area. I grew up down here, and one of my major concerns was education for my children. And I had formerly lived in Los Angeles and knew of Citizens of the World in Los Angeles and happened to see that it was here, so I felt so fortunate. So I looked into it, and I had a, my daughter was going into the third grade, so it was a big concern for me about how she would adjust and her switch in schools. And the school, just immediately when I went in, everybody was so kind and welcoming and really ensured me that, you know, they had the ability and the tools to help my daughter make this transition. And I have two children in the school, and I feel like they're receiving, you know, an excellent education, but they're also learning how to be part of a community, what makes a community, all the different diverse people in a community. And I feel like that they look at my children and help them to excel at their own abilities and pace, and if they need extra help, it's there for them. Even through this difficult time, I feel like the staff and the teachers are so great at supporting us through this. I also, there's just so much to say. I also feel like our board listens. They involve us parents to speak up, to be a part of everything in our children's learning, school functions. I also love the after-school program as well. There's so many offerings. When I went to school, that, we didn't have any of that, and other schools I've looked at don't have the diverse offerings that they do after school. So that was another reason, too. Socially, my children are able to excel. They have friends, they're making friends. I would also like to say that the school feels like home. Like, when you walk in, people know you, and I just think they're excelling, and I can't say enough great things about the school, the staff, the board, everything. So thank you for this time.
Thank you. And just so everyone's aware, for some reason, Facebook and Zoom are not liking each other right now, but we will have this recording up on our Facebook page shortly after we conclude. Next up, we have Katie Lineberry.
Hey, good evening, everyone. We're the Lineberry family, Matt and Katie, and we have two boys, one in fourth grade and one in kindergarten at Citizens. I'll just start us off by saying we moved to Kansas City about four years ago, and we're really looking for a community like Midtown that we felt, you know, reflected diversity of our city and our country, and we wanted to find a public school that reflected that as well. And also, you know, school, it was quite important to us that we find a school that appreciated and emphasized social and emotional learning as a complement to traditional academic schooling.
Matt, and as a parent with some education background myself, I was really impressed by all the efforts made to meet each of the students' individual and academic needs. We heard a lot about that from other parents already, so I want to go on, but I could really tell you numerous stories about it. The boys have grown just in their compassion and self-awareness from the staff and the administration at Citizens. But perhaps the area I've been most impressed with our school lately is just the way that the school leaders, staff, and families have really leaned into matters of equity. Parent voices are welcomed and sought out. We've had numerous conversations and book studies among parents and staff and school leaders about how to raise all of our children to be anti-racist and to care about their communities. I've attended board meetings and witnessed those board members consistently bring to the forefront the needs of families of all backgrounds. I've observed teachers and staff concerned about how to ensure that each and every family has what they need during this crazy time right now, from school supplies and technology to food shops and meals. We don't have it all figured out, like Luke mentioned, but I'm really, we're really proud of our community and the attitude of humility and openness that's been exhibited and valued among everyone in the community, and we really look forward to seeing how we'll continue to grow in the years to come. It's your turn. And Carter has one thing that he wants to add.
So I just say, when I was in preschool, I had to leave that school because kids would be rude to me. This has not happened, not even went up to debate in this school, and it will not. I'm sure of it. This is a great school, that is all I have to say.
Thank you so much from the Lineberry family. Next up, we will have Michelle Millard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I just wanted to talk for a minute. I have one student at Citizens of the World, a third grader, who is a special needs student. And I did not know that she would be a special needs student when we went, when we started at Citizens. I have learned that since we started and have been really appreciative of the amount of support.
and flexibility and the commitment that the school has shown to my daughter, who is in third grade, I think I mentioned. Even though she still struggles and we're still trying to figure out the best approach for her, I have always felt extremely, I've always felt like I have been part of the team in trying to determine the best way forward for her. And I think one of the main reasons that I stay at Citizens with her, even though it is a challenge, and I think it would be a challenge anywhere, is because my voice is heard, and I feel like we're all kind of in this together. And that Citizens, the team there, has the opportunity to be flexible and to think outside of the box. It's not a one-size-fits-every-kid approach, and I really value that. And I will not forget a meeting that we had to discuss what to do with my daughter when Dr. Drogi said that, you know, Natalie is theirs, and she considers herself and that all of the staff, like part of Natalie's team, and that they're not going to give up on her. And I really have appreciated that and value that. And in fact, look forward to a meeting tomorrow morning to talk about what to do about Natalie. Oh, my daughter. Anyway, so I'm just really grateful for the school's commitment to serving all kids, because I think it's not just something that they say, it's something that they do. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, we have Katie Ruse.
Good evening, members of the commission, members of the CWC community, and leaders from the school, board members, parents. It is wonderful to see so many members of the community this evening. My name is Katie Rouse. I am a Senior Associate Partner with Bellwether Education Partners. Bellwether is a national nonprofit. We are focused on dramatically changing education and life outcomes for underserved children, and we do this by helping education organizations accelerate their impact. So I have had the privilege and the opportunity of working alongside the team at CWC in Kansas City over the past two years. I would love to amplify a number of themes that we have heard shared from teachers, parents, and members of the community this evening that stand out from my work with CWC over the last couple of years. First, and John and Luke mentioned this in their overview as well, is the strong passion and commitment of the team, both locally and complemented by their national partners. We see parents, students, teachers, board members all speak to the mission, to the core value alignment, with great enthusiasm and commitment, which drives the aspiration and the sense of possibility for the school. And while there is deep enthusiasm about the school, my second point or note is that I have watched the school community reflect very honestly and transparently on the opportunities for improvement and have had the opportunity to finally, the third point, see them act on opportunities for improvement. And so have seen the school community embrace opportunities for change, act on them, and drive to results. And so I have great confidence in the team's ability to lead through their strategic plan and am delighted to speak and support of their renewal this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next up, we have Kimberly McKeenan. Maybe.
Sorry.
Hello.
Hello, there you are.
I apologize to all the kids. I apologize. I, my journey at Citizens of the World started off a little differently. I was at work and I was really concerned because my daughter's birthday missed the cutoff for the public school system. And she was already above her age level, and I was concerned about her staying in a preschool setting for an extra year. And I had a coworker tell me, well, you should try this place called Citizens. They may have the right cutoff. And so to be honest, my intentions were to put her in Citizens because she could start school and, you know, wait a couple of years and move along, but that's not what happened. Shortly after starting her there, I realized that I had stumbled upon a really, really good school. And I felt so, so lucky because she continued to excel. She continues to be above grade level. She loves being at school, and the one core value that really stuck out to me this year is change. Because when everything happened with COVID, you know, I'm a person who works in the education field, and I saw a lot of the communications and the things schools were sending out to families. And I felt like the information that Citizens put out was always clear and concise, and it always had the parent's perspective. They considered the parent perspective when they made the decisions. And it's been really good to know that my voice matters and also that I know what's going on. And that's really, really good to know because I have friends and family who still don't know what's going on with their schools in this time. And so everything is always explained in a way that, you know, is clear and concise. And another thing that I want to say, because I can go on and on and on, is authenticity. I have, my daughter is a very joyous person. She has a lot of personality. And there's multiple times that I've walked into the school and someone has pulled me inside and said, oh, my God, Delilah, she's so fun. She's so this, she's so that. And I'm like, who are you? And they're like, oh, yeah, I'm the, you know, I'm just, I'm the lunch lady or I'm the art teacher. And it's like, you know, people outside of her regular homeroom teachers were able to tell me positive things about my child, and that really, really resonated with me because this means that it is a community. She is interacting with all of these people, and they all care about her. So that really stuck out to me. And so, and one last thing. The biggest thing for me is, you know, I'm really concerned about my daughter's academics, and I want her to thrive in that area. But the one area that, you know, means a lot to me is that she grows up and becomes a productive, positive citizen in this world. And when I put her in the school, I did not make the connection because it's right in the name. Later on, I realized that that is what it's all about, and she is learning that she has a strong sense of self, sense of attending citizens. She knows concepts like teamwork, empathy. These are things she's learning. And I know that those are the things that will carry her throughout life and produce a good citizen.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next up, we have Kaitlyn Bunch.
What? Hi. Hi, good evening. I'm still at work this evening, and when I mentioned to a coworker that I was hopping on this call to give this public comment, she said, oh, well, that will be no problem. You talk about how much you love that school all the time. So I'll introduce myself that way. I talk about Citizens all the time and how much I love it. My son Liam is in second grade at Citizens, and this is our third year as a CWC family. And we chose Citizens for many reasons, but I'll just go over a few of them here. It felt to us and continues to feel like our neighborhood school. We walk Liam to school, and he's going to be able to walk there on his own soon. And I feel like that's something that is going to give him, you know, a boost of independence and confidence that kids his age need. We can pick tomatoes from the garden behind the school. We see students' artwork hanging in the windows when we grab a coffee down the street. And the students and their families reflect the diversity of our neighborhood, which is a really important reason why we choose to live and raise our family where we do. We chose CWC because the focus on social emotional development is an important component of success, along with academics. Liam is learning every day how to work with others, how to identify and handle not only his own emotions, but those of the people around him. He's learning to listen and negotiate and work through an argument, ask questions, inform and articulate an opinion, which I feel are skills that our children really need in order to navigate the world. The project-based learning component of the curriculum allows him to spend an extended period of time on a topic and looking at it from all angles, and it also gives him a sense of how the traditional school subjects of reading and math and science and the arts are truly interconnected. I am really thankful to CWC for giving Liam such an excellent start to his school years, and I hope you approve our charter renewal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kaitlyn. Next up, we have Jessie Janis.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Janis, and I have two students at the school. My son is a fifth grader and part of the founding class at CWC. My daughter turns seven next week and is in the first grade. We had a mixed experience in the public school and then participated in the Midtown School Initiative. We had hoped for a school that would reflect our diverse community here in Kansas City and also provide a learning environment that brought out the best in our children, while valuing and cultivating them as people, people with emotions and wills in addition to their minds. Often, when I talk with other parents, it's the social emotional development at CWC that matters so much to us. My children are light years ahead of where I was on emotional development. They're learning about self-awareness. They're learning about healthy and unhealthy expressions of emotions and how they relate to their peers. They, my children have a shared language about being a self-advocate that gets used everywhere. It's the framework that we're able to use to introduce what it means to be part of our community, which opens the door to talking and learning about other people. I believe that this is one of the most valuable concepts a child can learn. We live in the information age, and it continues to accelerate the pace of change in our world. Skills can and will have to be learned throughout their lives, but life does not stop for adults who have to play catch-up on emotional health. And CWC is giving my children a foundation of emotional intelligence that we hope sets them up to be, to become good citizens and lifelong learners. That's what we were hoping for when we partnered and signed on to be a part of CWC, and that's what we believe is going to continue to happen in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessie. Next up, we have Sharon Martinez.
Hi, I've been involved with CWC for three years. I'm a grandmother of a fifth grader and a first grader, and I've been involved in several different levels. I've gone on many field trips, and I have observed multiple teachers deal with many students of all kinds, diversity and emotional states. And I was so impressed because they know how to situational lead and adapt to whatever is going on with whatever child, and they're all different. And I always just sit back and go, how do you communicate so well with children? And I have seen that at all levels. As a Helping Hands volunteer, I work once a week down in the basement. So I'm doing copping, laminating for teachers. So I get to see the support materials that these teachers are providing for their students. And I am so impressed by the level of mathematics that they teach at first grade and second grade. I mean, I was a math major, so I'm impressed by how they excel their skills at such young ages for these children to learn, as well as I observe teachers handling different situations, and especially the leadership team. Leadership is very important to me. That's my background. And I just sit back in awe and watch these administrators, teachers, deal with situations that happen in the hallway or by the music room, and the way they communicate with the child, and they treat them with respect and make sure that they isolate their conversation, that they're not embarrassing them in front of other people. I just, I am so proud to be a part of the school, and that's why I continue to serve and volunteer because I want to be a part and to watch this happen, as well as to know that the children in the classrooms are being dealt with in such a professional way and adapting to who they are as people. Because not every student is alike, and each teacher takes that into consideration. So I hope the charter gets renewed, and thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up, we have Sabrina.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina, and I have a daughter that is a fourth grader at Citizens of the World, Kansas City. She is biracial, so choosing a school that was multicultural and inclusive was important to me. With it being in the heart of Kansas City, it is indeed both of those. They don't just teach their core values. These kids practice them in their everyday walk of life. We have also found the majority of families live these values as well. She has had many environmental challenges within our time at CWC, and I have always found the staff to be considerate, supportive, and very helpful. Many of the practices at school, we have implemented in our own home. Red voice and blue voice is probably one of my favorites. My daughter and I have learned how to effectively communicate because of CWC. This community and school are a positive and bright light in this ever-changing society. I vote, a vote to renew our charter would be giving our community a group of diverse, authentic, and well-rounded future adults. Our mission has only begun at CWC. Thank you for our time.
Thank you, Sabrina. We have Andrew Johnson up next.
Hi there. Thank you all, and I just want to say thanks to the commission, not only for tonight, but also for first accepting our charter five years ago and hearing the perspectives of parents and caregivers in our Kansas City community. I remember being in the room at the Plaza Library five years ago for this public hearing, surrounded by fellow parents who partnered with Citizens of the World schools to make the school a reality. I remember about that night, the enthusiasm and passion among those parents in the room for a school that wasn't even open yet. And five years ago, many of us imagined a school that would bring together a diverse community of children, families, and educators with the strong conviction that our differences, excuse me, that our differences make us stronger, and that children can grow in powerful and meaningful ways when we choose to come together and do the hard work of raising kids in a complex and divided world. So five years ago, parents were so excited for this partnership and this model and this school to open. I think it's fair to say that over the past five years, our world has become even more complex and divided, which means our children will face even more challenges that we couldn't even imagine five years ago. The mission of Citizens of the World, Kansas City, is needed now more than ever, which means the next five years for us are crucial, not because we will be up for charter renewal again, but because our kids deserve the very best education we can give them right now. And I believe that we are ready to take on that rising challenge. Today, as a founding and current parent, and also now as a staff member, what excites me still is a combination of where we have been and where we are headed. We have so much to be proud of, as well as hard work ahead of us. And from my perspective, under the leadership of John Hile, Dr. Drogi, and our Board of Directors, as well as a very powerful and focused strategic plan, I believe we are on an even better path to accomplish what we set out to do five years ago. Specifically, I want to name the way that we have deepened our commitment beyond being a diverse and inclusive school and toward being explicitly anti-racist. I do want to say, you might have noticed one small trend among a few of our speakers who, like me, began with Citizens as parents, but were so drawn to the school based on what we've seen in our kids' lives that we also wanted to work at the school and now our teachers or staff. And I'll say too, that the other parents you've heard from tonight, I could easily tell stories about each one of them about the ways that they are going beyond just simply dropping off their kids at school for the day or logging them onto the Zoom currently, but truly leaning in and partnering with us according to their gifts and skills and abilities and ways that truly make our community stronger. I think those are some of the ways that we show that our parents and caregivers at CWC not only believe in our mission, but also want to join us in enacting it. So thank you again for your time, and thank you for the many ways everyone on this call has made the school a reality. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe we have got through everyone. If I missed you, feel free to raise your hand or send me a chat real quick. But with that being said, I will turn it over to Delbert for any closing comments to the public hearing portion.
Billy, Tom Krebs here.
I cannot find you earlier. There you go.
I'll make it quick.
Yep.
Just really grateful also to the commission for the time and to all the families and staff who are here today. I'm involved, I've been involved with CEO frankly as a learner and distant admirer who got kind of pulled into their orbit in our own launch and opening as one of the founding team members at KC Girls Prep Academy. And so just wanted to kind of highlight an aspect I think is often less visible but incredibly important, and that is the really highly actively engaged and involved board leadership. We, as a new school that were, we were founding our middle school at the same time as Citizens was opening their expansion middle school, we're looking to solve for some of the recruitment and enrollment challenges that so many new schools face in such a disaggregated system that we have here in Kansas City. And their board proactively reached out to funders, practically reached out to us and established not just a partnership to support proactive recruitment and enrollment for the families that we both knew we wanted to ensure we're able to attend our schools to provide that diverse student and staff experience, but also brought funding to the table to do it. And so we felt really lucky as a learner myself to get to work with Laura and Andrew and Luke and so many of other, of the other team members that are here today, because we've learned a lot as a partner school and getting to work with them, what through their internal processes, through their board leadership, and through how they just constantly led by example. So I just want to name that kind of often invisible aspect of their school is incredibly important, that they have someone like Laura coming in from their national team, that they have this board leadership on so many levels, identifying gaps and practically seeking the resources to help the school leadership team close those gaps. The last thing I'll quickly say is that as a sort of charter developer, as our team was working on our own charter authorizing process, we looked a lot to SCL, Citizens SCL Model, both locally and nationally, to think through the details of what our, our process and our support for students in those spaces could look like as well. And so both on the sort of organizational and strategic level and on the support for students and families level, have learned a lot from working with citizens and watching them as they grow and expand. So also just want to encourage the board's positive vote for the charter renewal, because it's been such a pleasure, you're going to have them as a leader in our, in our local ed landscape.
Great. Thank you so much, Tom. With that being said, I will now turn it over to Delbert. If he's still with us. Actually, I don't know if he's on anymore. Well, if that's the case, then we will just.
Bailey, he's on mute.
I don't see him.
How about that? Is that better?
I hear you now. There we go.
I was muted out. Thanks to each one who participated this evening, to the board, Luke Norris, the chair, John, and to each parent and interested person, we sincerely appreciate you taking the time to give input. We are excited about the opportunity of reviewing and renewing the Kansas City School and what's, what's happening there. I do want to thank Bailey for your good work again this evening, and someday I think you're going to host a talk show and be at the control there you do do well. And thank you to the Missouri Public Charter School Association for, for putting this all together. We're going to have an interview with the board starting in about five minutes, and so we look forward to that. I think everybody's welcome to listen in, but it will be a conversation between the, our board and the board of the school. So thank you to each one. Keep up the good work, and we look forward to working with you as we, as we go into the future. Thank you, Bailey.
Back, everybody. We will now partake in the board interview portion of tonight's hearing, and I will hand it over to Delbert.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you to the Board of Citizens of the World. Let's, let's go around our board. First, there may be some changes from five years ago. There are some changes from five years ago. If our board could briefly introduce themselves and where you're from, and then we'll, we'll meet the Citizens of the World Board. So why don't we just, Mary Jane, why don't you introduce yourself, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Jane Almandos. I'm from Cape Girardeau. And I'm the newest member of the commission, and I'm thoroughly enjoying it. I'm enjoying seeing schools like yours and all the great things you're doing for your community and your children.
Okay, Kathy. Kathy Jo.
I'm Kathy Jo Loy. I live in Carthage, Missouri, and I'm also one of the newer board members, and truly, this has been a real pleasure to watch you guys grow.
Susan.
Good evening. I'm Susan Cole. I'm the oldest member of the commission in every way you can think of. I remember you folks from five years ago, and it's good to see you again.
Absolutely. Let's see here. Oh, the fisherman, the fisher lady.
Hi, I'm Peggy Taylor. I'm from Nixa, Missouri, and it was a pleasure to be in that public library. And to see such a large crowd that was so excited and passionate about seeing the school open, and now five years later, it's amazing to see the growth and the, the passion is still there.
Absolutely. We are missing Alicia tonight. I'm Delbert Scott, and I've been the chairman the last year and a half and ready to move that on to some other person before too long. But we are glad and we're, we're proud. Since you were the first school that we chartered, it's been exciting to watch your growth and to your development. And so we're anxious to hear what's happening and ask you some questions. Luke, would you introduce your board to us and so we can get acquainted?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Delbert. I will go ahead and start with our vice chair, Maria Salcedo, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Salcedo. I have been on the board now for several years, about three years. I, I am from, well, where am I from? That's a good question. So I grew up in Ecuador, South America. I now live in Kansas City. I was born in New Mexico, but I've been in the Kansas City area now for 10 or 11 years. And I joined the board because I truly believe in the mission of the school, and I'm here to fully support it on my, during the day, I am a lawyer. I work for Shupardi and Bacon in Kansas City, Missouri.
Thanks. Board Secretary Derek Nelson.
Thank you, Luke. Derek Nelson, Board Secretary. I've been on the board for just over a year now, and I joined the board after a phone call with Luke and my passions around education. So this was a perfect fit for me and my views. On my day job, I'm the Chief Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer for Commerce Bank here in Kansas City in the Midwest.
Thank you, Derek. Board Treasurer Jeff Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Phillips. I am a community banker here in Kansas City. Have been a fan of the school for, since its opening and founding, and had a chance to participate in some development in the Casey Moes School District, and was very excited to play a role with citizens in a treasurer capacity and have been on the board for one year now.
Thank you, Jeff. Jacob Littrell, one of the remaining founding board members.
Yeah, hi, everyone. As Luke said, I was a founding board member and a few years before that was a founding member of the Midtown Community School Initiative. So we have been at this for seven years, and it is really a joy to get to listen to families and staff talk about their experience with the school. Seven years ago is very much just a dream, and so to see that dream realized and, and get to be a part of this conversation is, is, like I said, a real joy. So I am an architect during the day. I own my own architecture firm here in Kansas City, and again, thanks for the time this evening.
Miguel Meneses.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miguel Meneses, and I was just moments from being a founding board member. I do recall joining the board when we were still shifting around from location to location because the school wasn't built yet. So I'm originally from Kansas City, Missouri, and born and raised not too far from the school, and have seen lots of developments with the school, and like my colleagues, looking forward to demonstrating our success. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim McDonald.
I'm Jim McDonald. I am a 31-year resident of Midtown Kansas City. I came here from the Northeast. Grew up in Somerville, New Jersey. I am also a parent of a CWC student. I have a nine-year-old daughter who's a fourth grader. I've been on the board for about three years now, and in my day job, I'm the Chief Community Investment Officer for United Way in Kansas City.
Thanks. We are not joined tonight by Tanya Gilbert, one of our board members, who is the Executive Director of Swope Enterprises in the Upper Room, a large urban after-school and summer school program. She is not feeling well tonight and is unable to join us. We will be joined shortly by Jana Sutton, Dr. Jana Sutton, who is a Vice Principal in the Lee Summit School District, who joined us after having worked in the charter space for University Academy for several years. She is also the Chair of our Academic Excellence Committee. And then for those of you that I haven't met from the commission before, my name's Luke Norris. I am the board chair. I was also pleased to serve as the founding board chair. And one thing that you'll see that has changed is we've grown in size, but also diversity of our board, and really look forward to the conversation tonight. So Delbert, back to you.
Thank you, Luke, and we do appreciate each of the board members. It's a very, very important job, the most important job. And we're excited what you're doing and growing, and look forward to continued improvement as, as we move forward. Let's, let's go first to Peggy. Some of the, each of the, each of the members have got some questions for you, so just an open discussion, and Peggy, if you'd go ahead.
Thank you, Delbert. First of all, to the board and, and to you, Luke, and actually the staff for the strategic plan. It's very impressive. Spent some time in the finance area today and would like to ask, you know, how do you plan to just really reduce this dependence on philanthropic support and increase saving opportunities within the system at a time that you're trying to grow the school?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Jeff, I'd love if you would be willing to jump in as the board treasurer.
Certainly. Thanks for the question. And yeah, school finances has proven to be very challenging because there are several variables at play and some that are out of our control. And so I think we have spent a lot of time focusing on the things that we can control from a cost perspective. We have a couple of programs along, along the lines of our after-school program, how we collect for our free and reduced lunch that we feel like will aid us in the income and the expense side. We also have some expectations as we continue to grow into our facilities that there will be some efficiencies there. But on the revenue side, we are keeping a close eye on our enrollment because we know that ultimately drives our state funding. And we're also keenly aware of what changes there are in state funding so that we can budget accordingly whenever we have expected cuts or when there's some unexpected short fundings in that front. We have been very blessed from the standpoint of having active board members and, and staff that are engaged and have great relationships with folks that want to see us succeed and are willing to do private donation. But we do have a plan to make that less of a percentage of our overall budget as we kind of grow into our capacity from a staffing and facility standpoint.
Thank you, Maya. So, you know, after serving for 30 years on a school board, knowing that inconsistencies that budgeting can happen throughout the year and shortfalls and cuts and whatever may happen, I was a little bit concerned with your reserves at this point. 30 days is, to me, as a pass board member, would be terrifying and scary. How do you plan to address that to move more money into your reserves?
Yes, that is something that we are, we talk about regularly, and it's not something that's lost on us. That is, that is a point on our dashboard that we pay close attention to. It's not uncommon for us to have a little bit of a dip in this time in season, but not to the extreme that we've seen going from 46 days roughly in July down to a little bit over 20 currently. That has primarily been driven through the state funding shortfalls that we've been receiving over and above the 6% cut that we had budgeted. We acted swiftly, and even in our last board meeting last week, approved some operational cuts that we had identified that we'd be able to make without our mission delivery suffering and also some empty staff positions that will not be filled. We also have a Plan B and a Plan C. In total, those come up to about $600,000. So they're significant whenever you're talking about a $6 million budget. So we are trying to make steady paces. There's not one month we're going to shore that up, but we do have a plan in place.
Could we also talk about your physical plan? I saw you had several options for growth, whether you purchase the building, expansion. You know, I was, have not had the opportunity to visit your facilities. Are you landlocked and are not able to expand the building that you're currently leasing?
Yeah, great question. Jacob, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, happy to. Thanks for the question. We are a little bit landlocked, although we, that hasn't stopped us from exploring opportunities to expand our existing facility. We actually currently just started a process specifically around our middle school. So we are working through some funding and award from Community List that will hopefully result in a permanent home for our middle school. We're working with an external partner, an architecture firm here in Kansas City, and engaging parents by including them in that steering committee and kind of serving on our entire parent population. And so this is very much a, you know, something that we are diving into immediately, actually just recently launched that process and, and trying to determine what, what is our next step.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Susan, what question do you have?
Well, nothing, nothing is as important as what I'm going to ask you, I think, because it, it has to do with student achievement, which we all know is the ultimate goal for every grade, every school. The first thing I want to ask is I read, I also, I want to compliment you on your strategic plan. Peggy's right. It's, it's all-inclusive, and it's a pleasure to read. But there's a statement in there that I read, and then I saw it again on your screen this evening. And it's, it's not horrifying. I just need you to explain to me a little better what you mean when you say students are not yet being supported to achieve the outcome we know they can achieve. By whom and in what way, Luke?
Yeah, sure. I think it's an important question. So I think a couple of things. We, first and foremost, understand that Kansas City has a long history of institutional racism. There are a number of environmental effects that have created significant trauma for our students and that those students come to our school sometimes without having, you know, had food the night before. They may have only slept in an emergency room because they had a, you know, sibling that was ill. And so we know that we have to continue building out student supports that really help support all of those families where they're at. So I think that's one thing that's really key in that statement. That's also, I think, why the board has been really committed not only to our anti-racist school culture, but making sure that we invest in areas around student supports and hiring additional social workers. I think the other thing is, we also know that schools or Kansas City lacks sufficient funding to invest in preschool and pre-K programs. And so we have students that are coming in for many ways that this is their first time learning to read and being acquainted with that. So we need to make sure that we continue increasing the capacity of our preschool program, and we can support families with access to preschool. But then I think we also focus a lot on the connection and understanding and know that the student's ability to connect with their teachers plays a really critical role in that. So part of our commitment to DEI is understanding that, you know, we also need to invest in professional development that helps grow, you know, competency in teaching diverse learners. And I think you'll see in our charter renewal, Susan, that there's a lot of emphasis on data-driven instruction. So the board and the staff are putting a lot of additional emphasis on using data and collecting data in more kind of quick repetition so that we can use that data to continually refine. kind of quick repetition so that we can use that data to continually refine how we're supporting those students before it's too late and we realize that we haven't paid attention to those leading indicators or those misses. So hopefully that answers your question.
Does indeed. And I feel much better having heard that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You only have a year of state assessment, but you fell short of your goals. What, what are you thinking about how to address that in this next, not, not year, but the charter term?
Yeah, great question. So Jonna, I wish was here because she is such an advocate for our commitment to excellence. Having helped build instructional programs. Oh, she is. Hello, Jonna. Helping build the instructional program at University Academy. She's someone that we really rely on. Jonna, if you want to jump in, I'll feel free to maybe round out at the end.
You think she heard me, Luke?
If you would, if you would restate the question, that would be great.
Sure, okay. You only have one year of assessment that we're looking at here, but it was well short of your goals. And my question is, how are you going to address that, not necessarily in the next year, but in the charter term?
Well, one of the things I can speak to is that we have an academic excellence committee that meets monthly. And with that, we've realigned our work. And so instead of it being an as-needed meeting, we've realigned that to be a monthly meeting. With that, we're doing work designed to then be shared out to the board, more of a dashboard. One of the things that we've noticed and we've always seen has been this interesting intersection between how we're seeing students performing in our local in-school data, you know, as far as reading versus how they were reporting out on app assessment. We saw that huge gap and because of that, we really sought after what are some programming and supports that we can bring on board to really support our students in closing that gap, but also give us more data to show us where students really are within that continuum of our different content. Those are one of the things that we're working on, reporting out every month, talking about those and also setting goals in more of a smart goal format to be really involve our teachers and everyone in the school with those smart goals in a, in a data team process so that we're not only setting goals for mid-year or the end of the year, but really looking at that, that data monthly and thinking about where are we going? What, what is our current reality? Where are we going? How are we going to close that gap? And what are the behaviors and indicators of success that we're looking at right now? And so that's some of the immediate differences with having that ongoing look. So it's not, so that it creates more of a streamline between all the way through our school community.
Okay, good. I understand the broad answer. But I should have probably included this in my first question, although that would have been a lot to address at once. You have a considerable gap between subgroups. What, what about that?
And that's one of the, one of the things that our new programming will allow us to really look at is focusing in on our different students. So not only our students that are, that are hitting the mark of where they go, but where are we falling out within our demographic, demographically? And then how are we going to jump in and support them? And so on the, it, it sounds like a broad answer, but before we were never having that in-the-moment data. Like we were using, we were using data and assessments that were designed more for end of quarter or, or mid-year. And this is something that will give us more of that ongoing weekly, monthly data so that we can go in and, and, and meet students with their immediate needs. Some of the new programming that we're using and resources also allow us to target students' individual needs and push out and support them with specific skills to close those gaps. One of the things that we are reporting out monthly in that dashboard that John is, is bringing in that report based on specific demographics so we can see how everyone is moving, not just the group as a whole, but, but each student, the students as a whole, but then also within our different populations.
Thank you. I'm encouraged to hear you say monthly and look at it every day and switch gears. I think in looking at the, in the next five years, you need to be looking at it one month at a time. So good for you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could follow up on Susan's first question, we, we've had, I think we have, we've got 11 schools in our portfolio now. Maybe 12. Somebody can correct me here. But in, in looking at your material and hearing the testimony tonight and just the the repeat of the word anti-racism, that's the first time that I recall the issue coming up in any of our hearings. So I'd like to know, Luke, whoever, whoever you want to, what, what does it mean? It's throughout your, your prospectus. What does it mean? What are you doing about racism? And is this a a temporary theme, something new since the summer of riots? Or just, just what, where are you going with this?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the, the question. So a couple of things. Obviously, diversity is one of our five core values. And our focus on DEI is really one of our three strands when combined with social emotional learning and core academics that really is positioned against the kind of graduate dispositions that we aim to achieve. We also know that we serve a diverse constituency and we started work about a year and a half ago that was led by staff to create kind of a, you know, a staff commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. And that was a, a group of statements and processes that the staff determined they would do to both hold each other accountable, but to help the community hold themselves accountable. I think the, the term anti-racist has obviously increased in popularity, but is really kind of core to what we've always been focused on is that we must make deliberate investments. We must make deliberate decisions and we must take deliberate steps to actively achieve an anti-racist school culture. Because of the prolific nature of institutional racism, we must work deliberately to again pursue that anti-racist. So while it is maybe a newer term that has caught on, I do think it's core to what we have focused on. So for the board, you know, what that really means is that we're making sure that we're asking for data that is, is informed by kind of anti-racist collection measures, but gives us the diversity that we need, that we survey our families in ways that are anti-racist, that we don't bias to only listening to white families or families that can provide access to a survey that's on Facebook at five o'clock at night, that we take deliberate steps again to building a school culture. I think the other thing that's really also interesting for us is as we grow diverse learners, we're going to have students that are going to start challenging new norms around diversity. And we need to prepare our staff to understand that their own cognitive bias or lived experiences may show up in the classroom as racist because of the prolific nature of institutional racism. And we need to be prepared for students to call out those, you know, racist tendencies to help students be able to talk about that so that students are very well equipped to actually take an active role in building an anti-racist future. So I think it's really core to who we are. But you're correct that the word anti-racist maybe is the, the newer way that we're really using to describe the kind of intentional nature of how we're going to operate.
Go ahead.
And if I could just, I just want to layer on to what Luke just said because being someone active administrator in another school district and also very active throughout the community, I have served at some leadership in, I believe, one of your schools that is now in your portfolio and worked quite a bit. When we talk about anti-racism, it really comes down to consistently, it's no longer enough to throw around the term equitable, throw around the term inclusive environments. How you really are able to do that is by ensuring that we're consistently checking our biases, we're looking at our data, we're looking at our feedback and we're constantly asking, who are we hearing from? What are we seeing? What are we noticing? And how does this set, is, is what we're doing setting up certain students for success and keeping other people's voices muted? And so I believe as we turn this page to the next several years, it's really important that as a board, we feel it's important that we're constantly checking those things. When everything was established with equitable and inclusive environments that we're built on, this is the next phase of that. And so I know many of your schools in your portfolio, this isn't the foundation of what they stand for. But I know that, that, that's one of the things I believe that makes CWC so unique in Kansas City and why families choose to be a part of this community.
If I could chime in too. As, as a DNI practitioner in Kansas City, you know, one of the things that the school did on their own, based on some of the unjust issues that we see in, in society compounded with the unrest in Kansas City. The, the parents and administrators and board members, we joined two book clubs over the summer to really dig deep into some of the issues that plague our community around racism and being anti-racist. And I think having these robust conversations and creating the psychological safety to hold space to have these conversations is really making a huge impact for the parents, teachers and other stakeholders to see, to have these conversations allows us to lean into discomfort and learn from one another so that we can be anti-racist, but also more importantly, create equitable, safe spaces for the learning environment to be thriving and be successful for the kids who are the, the biggest stakeholders that we're focusing our energies on. So I wanted to share that because you had asked a question. Is this, I can't remember how you asked it, but I think it was applied to suggest this is a flash in the pan. And I can honestly say being involved in this school, this is not a, a one and done deal. This is an ongoing effort by the teachers, stakeholders and members of the board to make sure that this conversation keeps going because in the absence of this conversation, I think we go back to business as normal and then we all lose, it creates a losing situation. We're taking as a board and as a school, we're trying to really create this win-win situation for all parties.
Very good. I appreciate your openness to deal with the issue. I, I don't have all of our demographics, the demographics from all of our schools. But I, I think you're probably the whitest school that we have in our portfolio. And part of that is a, a because of your location. And we've been real sensitive from the start that we are open to minorities and, and encouraging minorities. So that, that's what drives this conversation and the question. So I do appreciate you addressing it and, and wish you, wish you well in dealing with the issue. Mary Jane.
Yes, I have a question about enrollment. What is your target for this term and what is your strategy for hitting it?
Yeah, great question. Jim or Miguel, feel free to jump in here, but I believe that the charter reflects an enrollment that will get to 671 students in the full K8 by the end of the charter. I would just reflect that I think, again, part of the agility that I referenced at the beginning of the board meeting or of, of the presentation tonight was, you know, the board's commitment to making sure that we kind of govern with financial realities in mind. So you'll see, I think, in some of the charts that we actually made a decision a year ago to start an additional kindergarten classroom. Both because we know attrition in the system is part of what happens, but also that creates kind of the financial wherewithal that we need to stabilize the budget. So you'll see that we're 94 students, 96 students in most of the kindergarten classrooms and then 72 in most of the other grades. We do know that sixth grade is a point at which students start to, again, kind of migrate out of the system. So we plan for and budget for that so that, again, our budget is really pragmatic and realistic. So that just explains where I think you'll see kind of a, an enrollment projection that's a little bit more in the seventies. But Jim or Derek, feel free to jump in with any other kind of clarity around enrollment if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess one thing that I would just offer is the degree to which the staff leadership have been very intentional in our recruitment strategies. You know, during the, you know, the winter board meetings, enrollment and recruitment or recruitment specifically becomes one of the most pervasive topics in our meetings. You know, the, it's not an understatement to say that the board grills the staff on this topic during those meetings. You know, we have at least one dedicated staff position whose job, you know, the person whose job it is to focus on meeting our enrollment projection targets. And, you know, it's not lost on the board, the connection between reaching our enrollment projections and the, and the financial sustainability of the school. So it's an area where we've dedicated significant resources. And, you know, and, and, and we're, and we have specific strategies around including such things as over-enrolling prior to the start of the school year with the understanding that not, not all students who enroll will show up, but also that there's some risk that comes with doing so. I, I've been continually impressed with the, sort of the skill and the strategy that the staff leaders bring to the job of recruitment and enrollment of new families.
Hey, Delbert, maybe just to follow up on, on your comment, you know, I think our original charter had a goal of around 40% African-American, 40% Caucasian, and then the balance being Latino. So we have not seen the growth in the Latinx community. But one thing you'll see reflected in the charter renewal is a significant growth in our mixed race population. We're actually outperforming the public school system in terms of our mixed race population. And I think again, that kind of speaks volume to the authentic diversity that we've created. Unfortunately, we all know that many of our mixed race friends face as much, if not more discrimination because they oftentimes aren't really identified as any one specific community. So while, you know, we may be among the wider schools, as you referenced in your portfolio, our enrollment by Caucasian students is actually below what we've projected in the original charter at about 35%. And I believe you'll also see reference that we are higher in our free and reduced lunch population that we serve than our original charter. So we actually think that we're far more representative of the actual demographics of Midtown.
Kathy, did you have any other, or like, Mary Jane, you have any more questions?
No, you, you answered them. I think those numbers speak for themselves.
Okay. Kathy, Joe.
Yeah, you've answered a lot of my questions that I had, but I did want to know what the biggest hurdle you guys were seeming to face as you've moved out of a classroom based learning and into, you know, virtual type stuff. What are the hurdles you're facing and how are you addressing those?
Jonna, maybe do you want to take that from a academic perspective? And then Jacob, I wonder if you or Jim want to jump in a little bit on some of the student support side?
Well, I think with academics, the number one hurdles, like, you know, the engagement and engagement comes, the foundation of engagements, those true relationships. And, and so how do we connect with students and families at the start of a year in a remote way that really builds the foundation for everything to take place? So I believe here just like in every school setting that started in a remote way, how are we building our community? One thing that we, we really value here at CWC is community, is community. And we work to build that within the classrooms. And now that our, our families are spread throughout the area, how do we build that community, build authentic relationships? how do we build that community, build authentic relationships, build trust so students are able to be fully engaged and take those risks? With that comes a lot of teacher support. We know that that has been a lot with our building leadership, supporting teachers and also taking those risks and doing school differently. I know one of the things too is how are we connecting outside, creating ways for families and students to connect and build those connections in a way. With this, we, when I spoke about some of that programming that we brought on board is finding programming that allows us to still work with students in a remote way, giving us timely feedback. That was also a challenge is launching some of those new platforms so that we are getting information from where students are and then also realigning ourselves so that we're able to work with that information ongoing way. So I think a lot of the challenges we've had, we're facing as a school and we have had are the same challenges that a lot of of schools have been facing. And some of them hit us more with our core values than than other places, but I see a lot of those similarities across the educational landscape.
Yeah, I'd like to just add a few thoughts, both from the perspective of a board member and that of a parent. At CWC, you know, sort of tech, the technology divide, you know, is of course one of our major challenges as it is with, I think, most schools doing virtual learning. And I've been impressed with the extent to which the staff leaders have been on top of that challenge. You know, there was a period of time where we had, so we have basically a commitment to ensuring that every student has the, you know, the physical technology they need in terms of a device. And I now, I now know there's a conversation, I'm not sure where it stands, but a conversation moving forward around ensuring that families who don't have the adequate, you know, bandwidth in their home, you know, get that. But, you know, there was a period of time that we had Chromebooks on backorder. Virtually every school in the city probably did. And so that's been a major challenge. The connectivity continues to be a challenge. My daughter gets speech therapy once a week and she does it with another student. And the other student had just major challenges staying connected to the session this morning. You know, the fact that we don't see our families and get to connect with them in person is a major challenge. But the staff have really been creative about creating multiple touchpoints for students over the course of a week, which include things like one on one time with their teacher, plenty of Zoom sessions where they're with their class, getting virtual instruction. They've continued the after school programming in, you know, new and interesting ways. My daughter is doing Girls on the Run virtually, which is pretty cool, the way that they find, you know, ways to engage the students in extracurricular programming. And then I think key has been the extent to which the staff has put in place a mechanism to track student engagement. It's kind of the new, it's the new attendance tracking, honestly, is engaging or measuring engagement at the student level. And there's a kind of a systematic approach that the staff are using to measure that. We get reports on that engagement at the board level. It is really, I sort of, I think, sort of impressed upon me, the continuing challenge of trying to provide education, you know, in a virtual environment. It's made me anxious to want to get back to in-person school, but but I think the board's also been very thoughtful about making the choice about when to return to in-person instruction, which which we have not yet done. So the delivering high quality education in a virtual environment is incredibly challenging. But I think that the CWC staff leaders have risen to that challenge. And in some respects, from what I can see about other settings, may be better than some of the other schools.
You are one of, and maybe the only school that's partnered with a national organization. I want to ask you some questions or get your response on what's what your relationship is with the national citizens of the world and to what extent it does it benefit citizens of the world, Kansas City? And just how's that working?
Thanks, Delbert. Maria or Derek, maybe feel free.
I'll start and Derek, feel free to jump in. So we are, you know, one of the things that we just finished doing is revising the affiliation agreement that we have with our national partner. And the affiliation agreement is divided into two main categories, right? One is obviously being able to use the name, right, citizens of the world, the trademark, the brand. So that's one thing. And then the second portion of that, and that's where is the the value that we get out of it also is the services and the support that they provide. And the newest affiliation agreement sets it up in four, in nine different categories. So they provide support with the mission and the model, the citizens of the world, mission and model, strategic planning, accountability, innovation and several other. I mean, I don't want to go through all the nine areas, but it's in the chart, it's all the nine areas where they provide support to the school. And so the way that we foresee this relationship going forward is that they they will provide us with the supports and services that we that we think we will be needing specifically in the four areas that align with our strategic planning, you know, academics, diversity and inclusion, financing. And so the way that we, the plan, the way that we plan on going forward doing this is we have these nine categories. And then every year, now that we have the executive director, so I should backtrack. So during the first five years, our executive director was officially an employee of CWC ES. So of the national organization, they had another entity that was in charge of managing and supervising our executive director. Now that we just finished finalizing this agreement last week, that's one of the significant changes that we will have in the relationship, in the partnership with our national organization. The executive director will now be hired supervised by the board of directors, so by us here locally in Kansas City. So the way that this will work is that the executive director will now be the point person, the lead person that will work with our partners in LA with CWC. And our plan is to work with the executive director and make sure that he works with our national partners to make sure that, you know, the supports and the services that we need are aligned to the supports and services that they can provide in mission, academics, strategic planning, financing, all the different areas that are outlined in the affiliation agreement. And so our plan is to work with the executive director and make sure that he's, you know, working with them, hold him accountable now that we will be the one supervising and helping him to make sure that he is, you know, that we're getting the supports and services that we need. And the way that we plan on doing that is now that we will be managing the executive director, I myself, so as the vice chair of the board and the co-chair of the governance committee, my role will be to lead that effort, so to lead the effort of supervision and the review evaluation of the executive director. And of course, getting feedback from the stakeholders that we have, the parents, the board, the other board members, staff members, direct, direct staff members that report to executive director. So I will be leading that effort of the evaluation, supervision of the executive director. And that will be one of the domain, you know, one of the main areas where we will be measuring, you know, how his performance is managing that relationship with our national, with our national partners.
How long has John been with you?
Great question. John started in an interim capacity a year ago and six months. So he started in, geez, I'm losing track of time, sorry. In July or August of last summer. So he's been with us a full year, plus then some in between the interim role and then his permanent placement.
And he is your employees, your employee as opposed to citizens of the world, national employee?
Correct, that that will be one of the changes that is implemented as a part of the new license and affiliation agreement that becomes effective the day that the state renews our charter. So at that point, he will become an employee of CWC KC for all intents and purposes. He has always been really an employee of CWC KC. He's paid for out of our budget. There was some remuneration that happened between the two organizations to cover for his salary and he was supervised by CWC Network. But yes, he will officially become a CWC KC employee.
All right. Do any of your board members have a question for us? I hear silence.
I would maybe just like to take the opportunity, because we do have three of the senior leadership team from CWCS on the call. We're joined by the interim CEO Vanessa Rodriguez, the chief communications officer and chief of staff Laura Furlong, and then also joined by the chief program or chief learning officer Allison Kerr, who are three members of the leadership team from CWCS.
Very good. We're glad to have you on the call. Back to our board, do any of our board members have additional questions, follow up questions for the CWC board?
I don't have a question, Luke, but I do think it's, it speaks well for you and your whole organization that that you have so many folks that are doing it in this difficult way via little squares at the top of their TV screen. It's hard for all of us, but we appreciate the fact that everybody showed up and sat through all this tonight with all the technical challenges. So thank you all.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that and certainly we wish we could be with all of you and hopefully by the time the association conference comes around next year, we'll be able to. But I think part of what you said, Susan, kind of, you know, based on some of the comments as well tonight, you know, I think made so many of us emotional because what we do is really personal to so many of us. We all connect to the mission, we connect to different parts of our community in such strong ways, whether it's the focus on diversity, the focus on special ed, the focus on core academics. We've had the opportunity as a board to spend a lot of time reflecting on who we are as individuals and a big part of our board governance is really making sure that we spend time intentionally onboarding our board, not only around the mission, the model, the things, but also really building a team that's invested in our core values and operating norms. And I think you see that come through in the way that we, you know, govern and lead the organization. But the way that we, you know, oftentimes have differences, but really oftentimes more than not are aligned in the way that we govern the organization. And I think that creates a sense of strength for our board. So, you know, we all feel connected, even though we are disconnected, I think, because of a lot of that intentional work that we'll continue doing.
Well, you know, you were, you were our first and so we, we all, believe me, the commission has grown as well as watching you grow. So it's delightful to see you in this, in this capacity. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other board members have a question or a follow?
I have a comment, Delbert. The impression that you made during the first public hearing has been so passionate in my mind that I have quoted it many times defending charter schools in Kansas City and St. Louis. It was parents that wanted something better for their kids. And that passion and that compassionate way of dealing with that and finding that connection and that diversity still today is very evident in all that you're doing and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Peggy.
There is another person as part of our organization by the name of Robin. And Robin's been uncharacteristically quiet. Robin, what are we missing?
Oh, I'm just delighted to hear everybody and I think you've got everything. I'm going to actually turn this over to your question to Martha tonight because she's really, she's taking the wheel tonight, but it's lovely to see everybody.
Martha, what are we missing? Martha has already.
There we go, sorry. It didn't want to unmute for me. Delbert, I think you hit all of the things that we talked about. And I will echo what Robin said. I appreciate everyone's time and commitment to the students in Kansas City. And it's evident the hard work that you all put in and the passion you have for this work. So thank you.
The kids are all of our passion and to give them an opportunity for life and for education, to be what God made them to be. That's, that's what we all want. And I want to express my appreciation to your board. Again, obviously you've been building and diversifying and it's a lot of work, but it is always rewarding when you see the students bloom, do well, move on. And thank you to to each one of you for the time you spend. And we will have a discussion tomorrow in a summary. And then before too long, we'll, we'll vote on renewal and we'll let you know when that happens. And to all of you, thank you for being here tonight. I think unless somebody else has a pressing issue, I think we're going to say good night, sleep tight and we'll see some of you tomorrow. Thank you, each one.
Thank you all.